We can discuss that in context also.
All right, so six thirty-six. And I am calling this meeting of the AMPSA Board to correct the AMPSA orders. Regular October meeting. So the first thing that we'll do is look over our agenda. Were there any other additions or changes to the agenda? The one thing I am going to do, only Marty is here, so she wasn't on yet. She's here to talk about to me. Okay, well, I ask that. The one thing we will do is move up to the very front of the agenda. Candidate nomination. So there is, we do have a board candidate. Ed, can you do a quick overview on the candidates?
Sure.
She's here, so she's welcome.
Why don't we say that she's here?
That should be a good for all, right? We have a candidate for nomination this evening. Who is, oh, okay. Lucia Ferrante. And she is also an AMPSA parent of one student. And has quite a lot of experience in the financial, into the business. Which is one of the areas that specifically we've been looking to augment on the board. And even more specifically in having worked for public relations firms for quite a few years. And she is more than looking to join the board and bring her skill sets in order to basically just assist the board in any way that she can. So typically what we ask Lucia to say a few words?
I have some notes. Hi, my name is Lucy Ferrante. Lucia is my proper name and I haven't been called Lucia for a very long time. The only time I get called that was by my grandmother and my father when I was in Detroit. I don't get a big trouble like that. Thank you very much, Ed. I'm happy to be here. I've had the pleasure of meeting with most of you and learning about what it's like to be on the board. I appreciate your time. It was really good to have the opportunity to hear about the things that you've done, the amount of time that you've spent on the board. I currently am the Chief Financial Officer for Comcommunications. I have two children. One is a student here. One is in fourth grade. So I really wanted to make sure that I could give the appropriate amount of time to the school. Just a little bit about my background. I have been in finance for, I'm not going to date myself. I've looked at my resume to see exactly when I graduated. But I have been in finance for quite some time. And I spent close to twenty years in public relations. Most recently in for Com-Communications where I'm a CFO. Very focused on public social responsibilities in consumer marketing. Prior to that, about fifteen years for finance in healthcare, which is another public relations firm that focuses in higher technology and healthcare. So why am I here? I, one, I care a lot about the school. My son has been here for now, this is his third year. He loves it here. And I want to see the schools succeed. And I'd like to give whatever assistance I can from a business perspective, whether it be financial or operational or whatever the board might need from us. Anyone have any questions for me? I'm happy to answer any of them or questions.
Not everyone got a chance to leave. Are you from Marlboro area?
I live in Marlboro, yes. Been in Marlboro since 2001. And grew up in Hudson. And in fact, I was born in Marlboro back in the day when Marlboro Hospital actually delivered me. Way, way.
So a native, good.
I'm a native. I'm Hudson, Marlboro native. Besides a little stint in the middle where we live in the city. But we have besides that, I'm in Denver, a majority of my life.
So with that, I will entertain any motion.
Do I roll over? Would you like to listen to the board or trustees?
For a term from now until, which is approved until June 30th, 2020.
What is it, June 30th, 2020?
You guys have a four-year terms?
It's three-year terms, but I've rounded up. Three years' terms, too bad we didn't end at the school year. We'll never let you out, Lucy. You're totally California once you check. I admit, Sam, voting, we're talking 2020. That's only the beginning. Is there a second? Is there a second?
I second.
Okay. All in favor? Close note, the motion passed again ultimately. Welcome. So we are going to do the auditor report first and then we'll move to our regular agenda as soon as the auditor's leaving the table. Well, actually, that's true. You can sit up here and still have a seat. Yeah, sure. He's also stuck in traffic. Okay, great. So the next quarter of business is finance. Another kind of auditor.
So as a charter school, we're required to have an external audit performed by independent public accountants. AAF has performed that audit. We have Dave Keller here with us. He's a partner for leaders now. Works on a number of other charter schools as well. And we have Tiffany, and I'm just going to go with Tiffany W. at this point. Is our auditor in charge and is also here tonight. So we've got to turn it over to them.
Great, thank you very much, Tom. As Tom mentioned, all the charter schools, Commonwealth charter schools, have a deadline for submission of their financials to the state on November 1st. So we've historically met with the AMPSA board around this time each year for the last several weeks. So Tom put up a, really a comparison over there to, that we do have, which is a good financial summary of the financial results for AMPSA for the last couple of years here. And also does compare you to four other Commonwealth of Mass charter schools with current 2016 data at this point. And in the far right column, what we have is, and it's a little bit of a lag of data, but we work with a total of a firm of about 25 charter schools. So that far right column has an average of 25 schools we worked with for our last fiscal year. So just starting at the top of the page here and looking at that first box, what we try to do is give a little sense of the numbers. And maybe before I even get into the numbers here, I do just want to say that the school did have a clean audit report for the fiscal year end of June 30, 2016. So that's the piece that Desi will be looking for in your audit report. And there were a couple of what I would call compliance items that came up, which we'll touch upon in a little bit, just with some of the transition in the fiscal department during fiscal 16. So just at the very top here, just a little bit of biographical information on both AMPSA and the charter schools that are currently being compared to just to give you a sense of really where your financial results stack up. So again, really at the top here, you can see the grades of the schools, the first academic year, which is helpful in seeing how much in reserves each school has. And then the next couple, if they're suburban or urban schools and if they own or lease their facilities can have an effect on the occupancy costs and some of those percentages. And then the last number at the bottom there, the average number of employees, just will look towards the bottom here on just really some per employee numbers, so to speak. So just for the fiscal year 2016, the number of students that AMPSA has, again, you've been over your 966 student cap for these last couple of years. You have about 989 students for fiscal year 2016. And just your current ratio, what we have here is really looking at your ability to pay off your current obligations. So you can see there in 2016 for AMPSA, that's 7.32. And really, what to remember here is the higher, the better in a way when it comes to paying off your current obligations. So that's saying for every dollar of current debt that AMPSA has, you have $7.32 to pay it off. And you can see with 2015, right next to it there, that 4.44, there's a good-sized jump there from the end of each year from 2015 to 2016. But really, the bulk of what that is, is I'd say at least a settlement of a long-time issue with the landlord here. That there were, in fiscal 2015, there were about $966,000 of liabilities that were, per the lease agreements owed to the landlord, that were settled through arbitration without AMPSA having to pay those. So that's really a big driver that I would say in the drop in the current liabilities there of about $500,000. I mean, in those current assets, what you have there, that $9.1 million of current assets, about $8.5 million at year-end was cash. So again, you do have a liquid, good liquid operating position. But as we'll see in a little bit, kind of the challenges come out when we look at some of your occupancy and facility-related ratios on the cost side in a few minutes that going forward, you'll have that to hopefully resolve. The debt to equity, the second item here, where we talk about the higher the better in the first one, the lower the better in your debt to equity. So that 5.15 that's listed there, you're going to say for every dollar of net position or equity AMPSA has, you only have 15 cents of liabilities against that equity. So again, from a leverage standpoint, you're really not leveraged at all. If you go across that column, you can see a couple of the schools here, mainly School A, and then two of them out of the four comparative schools own their facilities. So School A with that 1.19, again, they do own their facility. So they have some debt on that facility. I'm really saying for every dollar of equity they have, they actually have almost a dollar twenty of debt for each dollar of equity. So that's again, a little low-leverage position that AMPSA has. But again, a couple of the schools here in B and D, at least their facilities also have pretty comparable ratios to what AMPSA has. And again, the mix of schools we work with, that 1.46, you do have some leveraged organizations with, in some cases, multiple facilities if they have more than one school involved there.
Can I have a question about that? Because the average here, the average here is 1.46. So obviously, there are a number of schools higher. Okay. My question is, what happens? What is it usually when a school first moves into a facility?
So, right, so that's usually what it, so I would say ideally in thinking from kind of a bankability standpoint, I'd say one and a quarter to one and a half is a good ratio to have. Again, some of these, you can see them up in the two to one range if we're getting an average here of about 1.46. So right now, at the current time, AMPSA's very low not having that debt or the related costs right now.
Do you have more of a question for Marty for a second?
No, no, that's okay. And the next item down, the composition of operating revenue. And just here, is with a lot of the schools we work with, AMPSA is a large portion of your operating revenue. Usually around 90-plus percent, 92 to 93 percent, is dependent on your pupil tuition. The one item this year, we did flag it, is the bottom item in this box here, the interest in other, and there's a little star there, which is footnoted at the very bottom here. It's very small print on the screen, but just that's indicating that of the other revenue this year, $966,000 of that relates to the settlement of the arbitration with the landlord. So that wasn't cash, that came into the school. That was really reducing the amounts onto the landlord. So, and again, AMPSA's tuition percentage this year consequently with that looks lower at 87 percent, but it'd be about 93 percent if that $966,000 was excluded out of there. So you'd be right in line with last year. And you can see with the other schools going across the page here that, and again, we see a mix with schools that some have a little more government funding, which is in some cases, special education money or really Department of Elementary and Secondary Education entitlement grants. So some of the schools that have a lower tuition percentage, and in particular in this comparison, School C at about 85 percent, they do have about 4 percent of their budget from government grants. And then they do have a pretty strong philanthropy piece to their budget at almost 9 percent of their operating revenue. You can see most of the other schools are in the 89 to 90 percent range.
Question regarding grants and contributions?
Sure.
Presumably that includes our annual giving campaign?
It includes that, but.
Number is substantially different.
It is, and I think part of that is that in these financial statements, you have the AMPSA and the two related foundations. So any money that flows between those entities is taken out. So this year, was it $15,000 or $20,000? So I would say the old foundation and the new foundation.
Okay, because we raised $23,000 in our campaign. And so I see 16 here, but that's because it got lost in the election.
Right, and it is included in the financial statements. Just so for all of these comparisons, we're trying to just really take out any inter-company activities, so to speak.
Thank you.
No, we don't.
I'm relieved.
No, we don't want to present the lower funds. So just the next item in the operating expenses. In this, I was briefly mentioning some of the challenges before, but on the cost side, and again, it's just noted here that last year was the first year there was really this in-kind pension, which is reflected in the financials. But since. Sorry, I miss causing all kinds of noises. I'm trying not to touch anything. But just on the operating expense side, the item I would want to bring everybody's attention to, which I probably flagged as the number-one ongoing challenge for AMPSA, is the occupancy costs in the operating expenses. That second-line item, occupancy costs, $2.2 million, representing 17 percent each of these operating budget. So that, that $2.2 million, about $1,650,000 is just pure rent-related costs. So that's 17 percent comparison to some of the other schools here. Again, on average of all the schools from last year that we work with, 25 schools, 12 percent is the average range of the schools. And even the ones we have here, in comparison, we've got a mix of a couple in the 10 to 13 percent range and School B and C at 6 to 8 percent. So again, that's really the long-term challenge from, if you look at the reserves you have, is really getting that facility situation settled in a, you know, again, occupancy and more on student costs. And then just the last item in that operating expenses box, the expense of the in-kind tuition. The 99.32 percent there is saying for every dollar of expenses AMPSA has, 99 cents is covered just by the tuition amount. And again, D and S E likes to see that, the higher the better. And again, you can see to the average of all the schools for last year, about 85 percent is covered by tuition. And then really, the balance for those schools is from other revenue sources, contributions.
And does Desi have a standard?
I think they'd like to see ideally above 90 percent. I actually haven't looked at that dashboard in a little bit, but they do like the higher the better. The next item right below that operating expenses, the change is in unrestricted net position. That $1,843,851 for this year. Again, I just want everyone to remember the $966,000 of settlement from the landlord there. So really, from a cash flow perspective, the surplus was about $877,000, which compared to the $831,000 last year is pretty comparable. And again, is your operating budget of your revenue sources, at least of about $14.7 million, that's about a 6 percent surplus as a percentage. So again, that's good, but, and again, you can see with some of the other schools in comparison here, that a couple that are running at losses, in particular, I see School A and D that are running at losses, they do have more sizable depreciation. And again, owning their facilities in both cases. So that's a big driver of those losses there. School C again, you know, just so you can see in comparison, they're there at about $784,000 and they're on $11,000, $11 million of revenue. The next box down, looking at everything, they're really either per student or when we get to the occupancy cost per square foot, we can just see the tuition per student. And again, this is driven really off of a formula by all of the sending districts the students come from. So you can see AMPSA just under $13,000 of tuition. You've really got School A and B, A being the closest at about $12,663 per student. And they're also a suburban school. And School B again, being a little lower at $11,000. You can see with a couple of the other schools, C and D, they are a little bit higher, $14,000 to $6,000. And they are both in the general area, the Boston area. So there is a little bit higher per pupil reimbursement there.
Just a question for you. On the tuition per student, does that increase, $300 or so there, does that equate to the increase by 2 percent of the expenses covered by tuition? Because we went up percent and a half or so on expenses were covered by tuition, which would seem to be very positive. Does that relate to an increasing tuition per student?
It does, but that's when the in-kind is taken out. And I did highlight the total expenses in that box right above, but your expenses really stayed flat, about a $4,000 difference. And that tuition was up about $200,000 or so.
Thank you.
You're welcome. And just again, overall, keeping that $13,000 of tuition in mind, a couple lines down in that second to last box, the total expense per student is about $13,000. So you should see 13,073. So again, you're spending, you know, on average, a little bit more per student than the tuition covers there. And with AMPSA, based on those operating revenue mix you have, you don't have too many other sources besides your program fees, which are mainly sports and activities for the students. Again, for other schools, you can see the relationship there that each of the schools are, you know, I think School A is spending, you know, a decent chunk more. School A and School D are spending a good amount more than their tuition, but I think also each of them has a little more other government money to help support that as well. Probably the last two items I point out in this box is the bottom two items, the second to last item, the occupancy cost per square foot. You'll see here for AMPSA, that's $24 per square foot. And again, just as we were saying, with the percentage of your operating costs, you comparatively on the schools, School A owning their school, and again, probably having some debt service with that from their debt-to-equity ratio, they're at about $23 per square foot. But the other three schools here range really anywhere from 8 to 18 and then averaging below $19 a square foot last year. So you can see that on a percentage basis, even looking at that average for last year, AMPSA's cost per square foot is about 20 percent higher. And then just the last item in this box, the personnel cost, the number of employees. And again, factoring this off, 127 employees, AMPSA's personnel cost is about $68,500. So you can see that School A and B, both being suburban schools, at about $59,000 and $63,000 per student. And again, C and D factoring in that these are both in the greater Boston area, averaging, there are two of those, probably about $70,000. So out of all the schools we worked with for last year, and again, a pretty good mix of urban and suburban schools, about $61,000 per stu, I'm sorry, per teacher for personnel costs. The last.
I have a question. You said, is it per teacher or per employee?
Per employee.
Okay.
And then just the last item, the number of months in reserves. And really, I'll point out a couple of items here that if you go to the second, really the third number up from the bottom, the monthly operating costs of AMPSA, you should see a million, well, it's probably tough to see on the screen, but it's $1,64720 of really your monthly burn rate. The number right below that, you have operating reserves or working capital of about $7,842. And that represents at year-end about 7.4 months of reserves on hand. So a couple of ways to look at that, that from 2015, you had about 5.6 months of reserves. And again, you ran a surplus this year, but also had that $966,000 pickup in reduction of the liability. I mean, you can see with the other schools here that, you know, just to put it in perspective, what other schools have, School A being a little lighter at about 4.2 months. But I'd say Schools B through D are pretty comparable at anywhere from 7.7 to 8.3 months. And with the average of all the schools we work with, right around five months. So over time, I think what we've talked about in the past is adequate level of reserves is in the three to six-month range. So again, you're a little bit above that now, but it doesn't feel excessive at the current time as you're going forward. Anyone have any questions here on the financial results or comparisons to other schools?
Again, is there a standard for months in reserve?
The three to six month, I'd say that's a range. Again, I think this average of all the schools is a pretty good barometer in that far-right-end column. So seeing five months there, I know we've got schools of different lives and sizes and locations there. So seeing five months there, I know we've got schools of different lives and sizes and locations there. So I think that five months is a pretty good metric. Yeah, I'll turn it over to Tiffany next for the, just a couple of quick highlights on our required communications.
Hi, everyone. My name is Tiffany Wachschall and I'm an audit supervisor with AAF CPAs and I worked with Dave on the AMSA engagement this year. One of the, a couple of things that I wanted to talk to everyone about today is more surrounding the audit process and what we went through as part of our, both our planning phase, our testing phase, and our audit fieldwork phase, which is where we really dig into the numbers. Auditing standards require us to communicate if there were any significant deficiencies or material weaknesses in internal controls. So when we come in, we learn about the internal controls at the school, we walk through the process with management, and then we also test the process. So we're very happy to report during the fiscal year 2016 audit, there were no instances of material weaknesses or significant deficiencies in the internal controls at the school that were identified through the course of the audit, which is good to know that there's good checks and balances surrounding the internal control process at the school. There were two items that were recommended through previous audits that were implemented this year, one of which being additions to capital assets being properly capitalized during the year and no instances of prepaid expenses and accounts payable for the same items being double counted in both places this year. So happy to report that items that were recommended in the prior years were taken into effect this year and we had none of the same issues or recommendations for this year. And then as Dave was speaking to previously, there is some testing that we're required to do by the state of Massachusetts for charter schools in the Commonwealth. And with that testing that we performed this year, there were two instances of material, material instances of noncompliance with the state requirements, one of which being the state requires the school to make remittance of retirement payments to the state by the 10th of the following month. And there was transition in the business office this year and with that transition, the monthly February payment was late. So that was, you know, one of the findings that we had with respect to the state that we were testing. The other instance of noncompliance this year that we found through our testing was the charter school end of year financial report. So the school is required to submit an end of year report to the state in which we are required to test against our previous audit. And with that, we found the revenue and expenses didn't reconcile to the audit of the previous year by about $68,000.
I think we did talk at the finance committee about-
Could I discuss on that here? What was the reason, the causes to the reconciliation?
Sure, so what we could tell from a high level, the differences between the audit report and the end of year report, on the revenue side, set with the insurance recovery revenue, interest and other revenue. And then on the expense side, it was a little more tough to drill down where the differences were because there's so many different categories of expenses, it was tough to see. But both revenue and expenses in total were off the same amount, so no net effect, but just, yes. So on the revenue side, it was a little easier to pick out, but on the expense side, it was, there was a couple of different things that we couldn't really nail down exactly where the differences were.
Those are both the fiscal year 15, fiscal 20, that's exactly right, yes.
And we did talk briefly at the finance committee meeting of just, again, the management team for AMSA works on that end of year report. And we just mentioned that before it gets submitted this year in November, we'd be happy to take a look at it just to make sure that kind of the key items do reconcile.
And then to briefly go, so that's what we would consider external communication that's required to be submitted to the state. And then we also are required under auditing standards to provide more of an internal communication to the board regarding the audit process and really key highlights of what we went through throughout the course of the time that we spent at AMSA and the work that we did. Within that communication, we're required to discuss any accounting standards that were either changed or adopted during the fiscal year. And there was just an adoption of GASB 72, which is really a fair value measurement of assets and liabilities, which doesn't really change anything as far as financial statement presentation or numbers. However, it's bringing the GASB standards more in line with financial accounting standards to kind of line those two up. So no real impact to the overall statements, but it's just kind of an FYI that that was adopted as part of the audit this year. There's also estimates made by management through the preparation of the trial balance and the general ledger, which is really what we take possession of and audit throughout the course of our fieldwork. And there were three different estimates that were made, that we identified as being significant and estimated by management, of which we outlined the useful asset, capital ass-, excuse me, capital assets, the valuation of in-kind transportation and pension, and recognition of grants and donor contributions. Also, we are required to disclose if there were any difficulties encountered with management during the course of our audit, of which we're very happy to report that there are no such difficulties or disagreements between AAF and AMSA. Also, we're required to disclose any corrected or uncorrected misstatements that we come through as part of the audit. So that would be when our audit work doesn't really reconcile with what was going on or what was presented in the trial balance when we took possession. And there was a handful of entries that were made this year, some of which relate to in-kind, which is revenue and expense on the financial statements, so no overall impact on the bottom line of the financials. And a couple that were posted to increase revenue related to grant revenue and donor restricted grants that were received during the year.
And I think the biggest takeaway on the adjustments for the, when we discussed with the finance committee as well, is that these had a very minimal impact on what was reported during the year, there's about a $16,000 impact overall. So that the finance committee and the board is getting reliable data during the year, there weren't significant changes as part of the audit.
Does anyone have any questions on the required communications?
Just will touch upon one quick document last, and it's just really a one-page document of, it's got this nice fancy name, excess carryover calculation. So I want to go to the bottom of this page and we'll briefly explain what this is all about. So back, I want to say this is back at the end of fiscal year 2010, the state set up really a formula of how much keynote of surplus a charter school's allowed to carry over. So right here in lines 13 and 14, the state's allowable formula that they look at at the end of each fiscal year that they would allow, in this case AMSA, to carry over is 25% of your current year tuition and then 20% of your projected fiscal year 2017 tuition. So in total, what AMSA would allow, would be allowed to have in their reserves under this formula, which again, it takes out things like depreciation and a couple of other income sources, but you'd be allowed to have about $5.8 million of carryover. Right above line 13, the cumulative surplus that AMSA has is about, just under $4.1 million there. So that, you know, as you think about it, that you're, you're not close to the cap. And what happens if you do hit the cap or go over the cap is you would have to send money back to the sending districts of where AMSA's children are coming from. So you're about 70% of the way to the cap, the way it's currently constituted. And what we had talked about as well at a prior finance committee meeting was just as you get towards looking at longer-term facility needs, part of ineligible use for these reserves is setting aside money for capital projects and future capital reserves. So that would be ineligible use that would also help you not be up to that cap.
And is there a limit to how much you can set aside for that purpose?
I know what they indicate there is just really the budget, 20% of the budget, they're the expenses for the next fiscal year. So that's really what they have to set aside at a given time. So you're not, you're not there yet, and I know the budget for this current year looks a lot more level, so. Those were the highlights we wanted to touch upon for everyone here tonight. Any questions?
If there are no questions, then we can take it over to Stephanie.
So we're voting to accept the order?
I'll make a motion then we accept the audit presented by AAF.
Give a second.
Sorry.
All in favor? Most, okay. Thank you very much. For Katie, that always was very helpful. Some of it's fine, it's very interesting. But apparently he thinks I'm evil. All right, so now we move on to the regular section of our agenda for the evening. And the first item of business is to approve minutes from the last minute. So this is a graph that's been used for packets. Sarah, I just noticed that I can't fix it.
The one at St.?
The one at St., yeah.
Thank you.
It's the way that word on track does it because for roll call books, she goes through. You've got to make that one correct. And this did not have the best session minutes, we did last month. Though we take that discussion and then on that, we have concessions to the third session. If there are no other questions or comments, then we'll have to move on to the next question.
With the correction, I was.
I'll prove even it's the one extension, Craig also stated. And it, you know how I corrected it in the text, but not the-
Oh, I didn't even check.
I didn't, that's the difference that got there. So that's the correction.
And what's, which goal is that?
I'll prove what's in it.
I'll give a motion to approve.
Yes, you made that, I shouldn't, I'll second.
I'll second.
And all in favor of the mention? All opposed? Okay.
I'm going to abstain.
And we know how to do it word on track now.
Yeah, right.
All right, so we'll move on to a couple of comments, and actually, Marty, you can go ahead and-
Oh, you. I was, well, I would have brought it in. Hello, everybody, and my name is Marty Hooker. I am here representing GE Life Sciences, you're going to go across the street.
Hi.
Our partner is a chairperson. Figures. But I am, this is full disclosure, I am also an AMSA parent. I have an 11th grade year of the school, it means I've been here since 6th grade. As the agenda shows on the screen, I just want to give you a brief introduction as to who GE Life Sciences is, what is the school partnership program we're starting to put together. In the past, there have been discussions with, between AMSA and GE Life Sciences, but it's been more on an informal basis. So just give you an update as to what we've talked about in the past, just so that everyone's on the same page. And also talk about some of the new ideas we've come up with now that we are more settled across the street and have, I'll say, more support, less of a grassroots effort going forward. So next slide please. This is with the GE Life Sciences, we are a sub-business of GE Healthcare, which is obviously a sub-business of General Electric. So Life Sciences itself is about 12,000 to 13,000 people, Healthcare is about 50,000 people. GE itself is over 300,000 people, so it's a pretty, we do have a lot of resources and people all of a sudden look at dollar signs, please think about the individual people because that's really what we have to offer. It's, I mean, as with every school, you just go through the thing, the operating budget is as small as it could possibly be, but the people are as generous as they would love to be. And that's where the real big resources come in. But going back to the business itself, we, from, our research really is around biologics, we have nuclear medicines, we have all the equipment that helps you do everything from grow cells to tear them apart, to make them build proteins, to filter out those proteins. And we have the equipment that then provides the doctors and the researchers with the pieces that they need to then create the cell therapy medicines, to recreate regenerative medicines. And our pharmaceuticals are what are used when you go to the doctor to get an MRI or a PET scan and those pharmaceuticals, those nuclear drugs that enhance the images so the doctors can better see and better get the diagnosis. So that's what we do. Our North American biggest facility is now across the street. Over the past couple of years, we have been pulling together several of our smaller facilities, out from New Jersey, out from other smaller offices around, around the world, in California, out from, around the country, excuse me. That's who we are. Next slide please. So in the past, what we've talked about is, again, this was, I'm sorry, I'm ahead of this. But the partnership that we're trying to work on is really us as a company reaching out to schools in the area, not only here in Marlborough and Hudson, but focusing initially on the high schools in the area to try and work with them, share our knowledge. As I said, the people are very generous and love to work with others, so they want to go out and share knowledge. We have some people who are frustrated teachers, so we could be able to go into a classroom and work with the students would be a joy for them. And we've also found that as other offices have worked with schools and worked with students, that both the students and the employees get energized. So they're better students and we're better employees. It's just, it works out all that way. And also, as, as kids learn things, they can learn about new career opportunities, things that they may not have thought about because they get a chance to go and talk to, you know, employees, people who are doing different things within the business itself. So that we also provide quite an extra added piece there for them, as well as why the heck am I learning this in the first place? How am I going to use whatever it is 10 years from now? Why bother with differential calculus? So it helps them realize that what they're learning today does have a real application in the future. And next slide please. So in the past, and as I said, what the things we talked about, sorry, about almost a year and a half ago, were with a grassroots effort to try and get together with people here at AMSA, people who have raised an interest when they, we were in temporary offices over on Simraon Drive for a while. People would know driving by, they saw the school, they said, hey, do they think we can do there? And me being a parent at that point said, sure, let's talk and find out. So really, when you're looking at, and I would be talking with some people about saying, my son's asking this question, we answered that idea and maybe come up with it, let's do that bigger. I think unfortunately, between the transitions that were going on here, the transitions that were a little bit going on with Life Sciences, and there were moving people around and getting people organized, and it just didn't work out. and getting people organized, and it just didn't work out. I got privileged along the talking with Dr. Jurey about some of the science programs here and the scientific questions the students wanted answered. Unfortunately, the scientists who asked to, asked to move in. So when Dr. Jurey asked for that, I didn't have the resource. We have them now. So next slide please. So what we'd like to do is kind of continue on with those thoughts, is really working with the department heads, working with the teachers. What are the questions the students are asking? What are the things the teachers are trying to teach? And how can we come over and work with the students in the classroom to be able to provide some of that real world knowledge, to be able to provide added information that our employees have because they do it on a day-to-day basis? As well as some of the other things we're talking about, site visits, having the students come over and spend half the day with us. Talk to people, you know, talk to a larger group of people at Life Sciences about what they do, how they got to where they are. Why did they take their biology degree and end up in marketing? Why did they end up in communications when they've got a PhD in genomics? You know, as well as the people who are sitting in the labs doing the research. Give them a tour of our, of our labs. Our labs are starting to be built up. We have about half of them built now. More coming online in the next year, but we can start to show them. You've got this size sample equipment here. Well, here's the big life scale, life size scale, one of the things on a day-to-day basis. And also, we have manufacturing sites in Westboro, a lot of that in our world. And maybe they're interested in manufacturing. How do you take this out of the research and make it a manufacturing, buy manufacturing equipment? We can show them that too. So, and as well as, this is a chance, if, if sort of things go well between a student and a teacher, we can get on into individual mentoring things. We can also provide these real world business pieces around what's a mock interview? Either in the college or on the job. What's it like to do that? You sit down with a real business person, not prepared by anyone else or a teacher, but here's someone you really don't know who can pretend to do that with. And there's lots of other ideas, I'm sure. You guys have other ideas as to what we might be able to provide, what might help the students, you see the students on a broad scale, students on a day-to-day basis. So there's, there's lots of opportunities for us to move forward with that. Lots of work to do between getting from the idea state where we are now to actually having the kids come over and visit us, or our employees come over and visit with the teachers. But I want to know, we would love to be able to do that. And if you guys can help us get it started, we'd love that. So I have, I'll say, a draft brochure, which I know, I had a chance to talk with Ms. O'Connor and impressed with Dr. McLeary earlier this week about this. And actually, this will, Ms. O'Connor has offered a couple of good suggestions for approving our brochure, which we will implement going forward. But if anybody's interested in a very high-level draft brochure about what we're trying to do with the school partnerships and my business cards, I'm sorry. If anybody wants to contact me, I'd be happy to. Any initial questions, if that's allowed?
Yes.
This sounds great to me. It's really, I think, in line with the AMSA stuff, especially from our STEM focus. One of the things I'm thinking of, sort of the next progression of this, do you think at some point in the future, there might even be an opportunity for either summer employment, summer internship, on a small scale, several weeks or something like that in the future?
I'll say yes with a caveat. The issue we have is its age. Especially with what we're working on, we're sort of very restricted from basically 18 years old. So that we, pretty much, is one of the first questions everybody has asked, internship employment and was not. And yes, we'd like to do that. We do have that 18-year, 18-year-old restriction. So it's definitely an idea. We're definitely not logging out, but if you have high school kids, I don't want to come over there.
But potentially for our seniors.
Alumni.
And we have alumni.
Yeah. No, yes, understood, you have the seniors, something to do before they go into college. Lots of ideas, but on that.
Great, thank you.
I think this is great stuff. It's really good. I would actually recommend that you guys actually get together and put down, put together a date and plans, an action plan to make sure this stuff happens. That would be my recommendation, because I think this stuff is really good.
You know, it's great because they're literally across the street now and you're fully moved in now, pretty much, right?
Yeah, we're pretty busy. They, they said, we're still building out, we're still moving in, but we are, we're stable enough now. We have, you know, and.
How many people do you have in the facility?
Right at the moment, they're over 300, I would think. And we're going, I think about another 100 or 200 will be coming in. But we should be fully built out by 2010 and 2018.
I think Scott's idea is an interesting one. So is it reasonable to say that for the next, well, the next board meeting is coming up in a couple of days, but, but maybe for December's board meeting that we come back and say, there's a plan in place up here, but I feel there's a lot of things to do.
I think so. The, the, uh, the chairs were asked to give, quote, on what currently do. They gave me a list of the number of, uh, already implemented, mostly for seniors. Nine seniors that graduated last year were doing internships with computer science. They're, gave me a list of companies that we currently have relationships with, Google, Microsoft, Waterfresh, Farm, DC, North Force, and so. We're doing, we're currently doing things with a number of different corporations. Also, I've got a list of the partners of the various universities that we have relationships with. Boston University, Stan, Stanford, Stanford, Stanford.
No, Stanford. It is Stanford.
Says here Stanford, so that's an Alabama.
Stanford, California.
Alright, so that's it then. Salem State, UMass, Denver, MIT, and Harvard. So a good number of these have, well, all of them are related to science. So computer science, chemistry, geochemistry, biology, sustainability class, coupled with cybersecurity class. And there were a few relationships we had with some government officials. Last year, there was a lecture on cybersecurity from the deputy director of NSA and a lecture on cybersecurity from Department of Homeland Security. Continuing to build those things.
Well, maybe that's, maybe if we do an agenda item in December, it can be very specific to that. And, but I love those updates though. Do keep those updates coming. It's great.
Okay. Our, the second person who signed up for public comment is Jessica Bowen, AMSA Teachers.
This is all somebody.
Hi, old friends. Sorry, my former friend, I mean, my, oh, see, I'm coming back. Hi, everyone. Most of you know I'm Jessica Bowen, I teach history here. And I'm here tonight to read to you a letter that is signed by, I believe, if I counted correctly, 59 members of the faculty. To the administrators, the board of trustees, and the AMSA community. We, the undersigned members of the AMSA faculty, wish to express our full-throated support for our duly-elected representative to the board of trustees, Tom Esereido. Mr. Esereido has worked tirelessly. Indeed, he has gone well above and beyond the requirements of the position to hear the voices and concerns of his colleagues. He has spent most of his lunches in the teachers' lounges of all three buildings, asking questions, gathering feedback. He has constructed detailed digital polling and distributed questionnaires. He has spent hours collating and extrapolating the relevant data. He has then presented that information to you, the board of trustees, in a measured and thoughtful manner. The concerns and views of the AMSA staff have been accurately and conscientiously conveyed to the community by Mr. Esereido. And brief, we have complete confidence in him as our collective voice. And I just would like to add on a personal note, as somebody who knows just how difficult this job is, and I know you all know that too, that I'm very proud of the job he has done so far. So I'm going to give this letter, which is signed by all of us, well, not all of us, but 59 of us, to you all.
Wow, Tom. Drop dead.
Anyone?
There you go, yeah.
Okay, well. I was going to begin by reintroducing myself because at the BOT meeting in August, many people were not here. However, after that, I won't. So let me begin with a brief discussion of the uniform policy. Many teachers have reported to me that, that they attribute a certain material improvement in, in the focus of students in class to an increasing success to our uniform policy. And we understand there are details and issues still outstanding with it. But in terms of what to us would be its primary purpose, affecting improvement in our academic climate, many teachers, not all, but many, have told me that they believe it's succeeding. Now, last BOT meeting, I listed out a number of major concerns that the faculty had at the start of the school year. This was based partly on an internal faculty survey that was carried out through summer and into the fall, and partly on just events that occurred at the beginning of the school year. So I'm not going to repeat what I said, it's not part of the record. But I'm going to have a follow-up, a series of follow-up comments on them. The first is on the mentoring program. So when I last talked, the mentoring program was in the state of not yet being. So there is, there are some changes that we can see. Faculty do not yet see it implemented. However, we do understand that it's under construction and that certain teachers have been contacted for possible participation in it. And I could say that the faculty sentiment is overall a hope that this is realized and made effective as soon as possible. New teachers that we have, we have many new teachers, which I believe find a program that is well thought out a major part of this success at AMSA. The one area of concern that faculty have about any possible program, we do not yet know what that would be, but in terms of thinking what might be, we understand that department heads have a major role to play in this, in this program that's coming into effect or will be coming into effect. Department heads are evaluators. And we can certainly understand how it'd be possible to have department heads be a portion of that program and yet keep separate and confidential the actual mentoring of teachers. And we very much hope that that is respected in whatever shape this new program has. Next is a discussion on schedules. We are living the impact of the schedule we have for this year. The causes I discussed last time is in the report. I'll just briefly mention that they were unexpected, caught everyone off guard among the faculty, and caught students off guard. At this point, we are not seeing the schedule issues genuinely resolved. It may simply be that what we have to consign ourselves to is a year of working through what we have and trying to make the best of the situation. The impact on our classes and the students' learning in classes is genuine. As you may remember, just some of the effects with very large class sizes, classes being, having insufficient equipment for the students, they have computers, for example. Students being unable to take certain courses which they would have been able to take in previous years because there are now new unexpected conflicts. Safety issues with gym and so on. We will make this year work, no matter what. But I could say that the faculty very much desires, very much expects that nothing like this should reappear next year. It's been an unprecedented experience. And having not been in it for some time is not one we want to have ever again. I would say right now, the schedule and its impact on academics is probably the major concern of the faculty. The next topic I mentioned last time was the attrition of teachers. It continues. So far during this school year, we have lost five teachers. One I heard about today. I'm not going to say too much on that right now, except that the loss of teachers, the continuous hemorrhaging of teachers over the last few years, right through this year, is undermining the school in a long-term sense, which is probably going to make it unsustainable in terms of carrying through what the school was built for and what it's aiming at. There's only so many veteran, experienced teachers you can lose before you're saying, we are completely different institution, who's completely a group of personnel who have no memory of the past. We are getting close to the edge of that. We do hope that through the year, the administration takes this to heart and starts to think through how we can retain more of our best faculty and so that when teachers have the default option of, have an option to leave elsewhere, rather than this new normal of saying, well, maybe I do not want to go back to AMSA. We will go back to the old tradition of saying, unless there are very special circumstances, I will do everything to stay at AMSA. The faculty was, had a roundtable meeting this past Tuesday, and it believes it was a very valuable experience. And they are thankful for such an instrument for communication with members of the board. And they, they believe this is a positive contribution to AMSA's culture. And we want to thank you personally for having through these past years made such an event possible. Lastly, many, many, many faculty members have talked to me, I just through emails individually, and said some really amazing things about two new hires in administration for this year. Mr. Ben Keeler, who is, I believe his official title is something like dean for students in the lower school. And Ms. Ellen Lindsay, who is the vice principal. The general impression that I get from all these communications is that people feel that they are doing above and beyond and are instrumental in whatever success we're having this year. I believe I've covered what I needed to cover.
Is it?
Yep. The first thing I want to touch upon is communication. And on a positive note, the communications that have been going out from Ms. O'Connor and Ms. Lindsay on a weekly basis or bi-weekly basis, depending on, on the week, are truly a step in the right direction. Parents do appreciate it and it has been helpful. One thing that I have heard from a number of parents is that it'd be nice if they could attend one of the evening coffees and would be able to, preferably an evening one, so that more parents would be able to attend in order to give parents greater access. When they have attended PTO meetings, it's, it's been very helpful. We also had a parent roundtable last night. Chris and Ev were also at the meeting with me. One thing that we did hear about, and I've heard about this via a number of conversations and emails, is there's a concern amongst the parents about the punitive environment that students feel they are under here. In the past, students have been, have come to school and found out what they've done well. And for some reason this year, they feel like they're only coming to school and finding out what they're doing wrong. Just a brief example, because today weather-wise is a good example. But can I wear boots today or not? Will I get written up for wearing boots today? Those are the types of things that are amongst the concerns of both the parents and the students. It's just not where we want to be in terms of, we want to be focused on academics and not, you know, what I'm wearing on my feet and is it appropriate? Similar to what Tom said, overcrowding is still a concern amongst the parents, especially in the middle school. There are classes that, you know, are, have too many students in them. The teachers are not going to have enough time to give to each student. And there's obvious safety issues involved. Schedules, again, also a concern amongst the parents. Students may be, you know, sitting for two hours without a class with a teacher involved during the week. That's a problem. There are also downstream impacts. If they don't get their prerequisites done one year, will we be able to take classes the next year? So those are the concerns that the parents have.
So, those are the concerns that the parents have. Finally, I just want to bring it to everybody's attention, there is a concern amongst the parents who can't attend these meetings but are interested in staying involved. Obviously, we have the issue where the meeting minutes have to be approved before they can be posted. So, there's a month-long delay for parents to find out what's taking place at the meetings. I have reached out to the local cable network to see if it would be possible for them to cover these meetings live, similar to what they do for Auburn High School. I haven't heard anything back, but I just wanted to give everybody a heads-up that hopefully in the future, this might be something that we can do. We were discussing before the meeting as well, other options that they're looking into, but just wanted everybody to be aware of that. That's it.
I got a question.
Yes.
We're obviously being videotaped.
But parent volunteer.
Yeah, but isn't that posted, like somewhere?
It is, but it's not always, it's not always done in a timely manner, and it's not always... It's against volunteer.
Are you slacking?
A parent volunteer.
I'm a little choking.
Yeah. No, but volunteer does time for two years.
Exactly. So, and so what we...
Thank you.
What I discussed with the number of the parents is if they, if it was shown live on the local channel, they could DVR it. I mean, obviously, 6:30 isn't the most convenient time for a lot of parents, but they could DVR it, watch it later in the evening, or catch up over the weekend.
Yeah, I mean, I think this is something we talked about, that maybe just personal members can really dig into this. Because it has been helpful. It's been very helpful for the community to know what the board celebrates on. I think just having them available the last two, three years has helped everyone.
So, stay tuned. I'll let you know what I hear back.
Can I just...thank you. And Liz covered, I think, smartly very well. I was struck, a lot of energy around uniforms, but specifically around precision, the perceived precision with which it's being interpreted and enforced. And so, several parents, there are about 25 out of 10, but, you know, worrying about striped shoe laces versus all-coat shoe laces, whether the stripe on the side of sneakers is gray or black. Considerable energy around this. Why add to the notion of the uniform? A lot of energy around being required to go through one thing, saying, "I can't buy Caca pants at Target, I can't buy a blue shirt at Walmart." And, you know, the expressed desire was kind of, let's not, we get it, uniforms are right, why can't it just be a Caca pants and a blue shirt? Why is all this energy and expense out? And the discussion of uniforms ate up about a quarter of the...
Okay, thank you. Matt, see, we were going to turn it over to the CD, or is it not going to be?
I'll keep going.
Do you want to put the AP? You have the AP test results, so don't have to...
So, the first thing I have is the AP test results and analysis. Last month, I got the AP scores, and I gave the board a look at the test scores for about five years back. And one or two board members asked for some more in-depth analysis of why in some cases, in a good number of cases, the scores had tapered off, they had gone down. And so, I went back to the principal and the vice principal and the board chairs and asked for them to put together some analysis that would look at possible reasons. They came back, the board chairs.
I think not the board.
Yeah, the board chairs went back. So, they came back with a couple of things. And one of the main points that was made was that several years ago, the school changed its approach to giving the AP test. And instead of focusing on the students who had the most potential to score highly, they were opened up to a wider number of students, so that more people could take them. And by opening them up to a wider...